For decades, Arlington has worked to give people travel choices. Our county has the most metro rail stops in Virginia. A successful local bus service, ART, which carries 2.5 million riders annually, and a growing bike share program. It is all designed to make it easier for you to live, work, play, and visit in Arlington. Now we're taking our transportation network to a new level of service by making a strategic investment in a streetcar system, Arlington's next generation of transit. Arlington Streetcar System, still in the early design stages, will put a decidedly modern twist on one of the nation's oldest forms of mass transit. Streetcars will extend metro rail's reach and provide important infrastructure and people-carrying capacity. They will offer yet another travel choice and help reduce traffic congestion as our community continues to grow. And they will do all this at a fraction of the cost of building new metro lines. Arlington Streetcars will bring clean, efficient, accessible, quiet transit to two of the most heavily traveled corridors in Northern Virginia, Route 1 and Columbia Pike. They will link to the regional transit network connecting to Metro Rail in Pentagon City and Crystal City. When completed, Arlington Streetcar System will serve already densely developed parts of the county that are projected to add 37,000 jobs, 21,000 residents, and more than 11,600 housing units between 2010 and 2040. Is it bold to add a whole new form of transit to our mix? Yes. But decades ago, Arlington made another key strategic decision when it opted for Transit-Oriented Development or Smart Growth. By concentrating development around transit and offering transit options, Arlington has built an impressive record of success. Success at managing growth, expanding our tax base, attracting high-quality development in businesses, and moving millions of people every year. More than 40% of all transit rides in the Commonwealth of Virginia begin or end in Arlington. Within Northern Virginia, well over half of all transit rides begin or end right here in our community. By 2040, we expect annual transit trips in Arlington to grow to 110 to 120 million. That's a staggering number for a county that is only 26 square miles. Only a robust mix of transit options can meet our county's future needs. That's why Arlington is making major investments in our transportation infrastructure, including in a modern streetcar system. We're already in the early stages of designing a two-segment system. One segment will run nearly five miles along Columbia Pike, from Pentagon City in the east to the skyline area of Fairfax in the west. The Columbia Pike Streetcar Segment will link two major employment centers and, when completed, offer riders a one-seat ride from Pentagon City to Skyline Plaza. The Columbia Pike Streetcar is the centerpiece of efforts to revitalize the Pike and transform it into a more walkable Main Street. Arlington is planning a second segment that will run through the Route 1 corridor, the heart of one of Arlington's most successful business districts. The Route 1 Streetcar Segment will run from Pentagon City through Crystal City to the Potomac Yard border between Arlington and Alexandria. This segment will connect with the Columbia Pike Segment in Pentagon City, ultimately providing a one-seat ride from Skyline and Columbia Pike to Crystal City and Potomac Yard. Across the nation, cities and counties are investing in streetcars because they offer many of the benefits of heavy rail transit at far less cost. These are not the trolleys that used to carry people across Northern Virginia and to and from the District of Columbia from 1892 to the 1960s. Arlington Streetcars will be very similar to the electric streetcars that are transforming downtowns in Portland, Seattle, and other American cities that are searching for ways to revitalize neighborhoods, encourage sustainable development, and reduce pollution. Portland has seen how a modern streetcar line can be an economic boon to a community. Developers are attracted to areas with fixed route transit lines because they don't have to worry that stops or routes might change. They know that streetcars are a reliable, appealing, efficient form of transit. Communities that have built modern streetcar lines have seen property values around those lines rise.
Since a streetcar is a fixed mode of transportation, it brings a certain number of people past this restaurant every day. And sometimes it's all about people just knowing where you are. Streetcars, they're quick, they're silent, they're efficient, and I just think they're great for cities. People that are visiting the city tend to hop onto a streetcar because it does have a lot more romanticism attached to it than a bus. I do think that in the end, it's a positive impact. There are no, I can see no negatives to having the streetcar, especially two lines on either side of the restaurant running through.
I believe the streetcar benefits Portland immensely by the lack of cars that, if you look at how many people are actually on the streetcar right now, if everybody were driving a car, we wouldn't actually be going anywhere.
The streetcar is such a vital part of our neighborhood that it brings locals home and it brings tourists throughout the Pearl District. And the streetcar has a stop across the street. It stops every 15 minutes or so, right in front of the store. It's certainly the easiest, most convenient way to get around downtown Portland. It gives me access to travel to parts of downtown without having to get into a car, and I think that's huge.
Having the streetcar was a key factor in us picking this location, especially for it being our flagship studio where everyone comes to visit. So having the streetcar be a central point of how people get around really makes a huge difference because parking is always a problem. It definitely makes the traffic run smoother. It helps the businesses and it helps people that, you know, don't have a car or don't want to drive it downtown.
I live just a few blocks down the way in northwest, and it's kind of nice to not have to drive my car and have to deal with parking downtown. The streetcar is just quiet and smooth, and it's just kind of, it feels really low-key. At the same time, you're quick, you're kind of getting everywhere, and you don't have to worry about it.
Our stop is located 50 feet from our front door, but actually the streetcar is 10 feet pretty much from the front door of the hotel. The streetcar has made it extremely easy for people to get here. People travel to the Northwood Station from all over the country. Most of my front desk, guest services people that work here don't have a car. This is the way they get to work every single day. It is the top amenity of the entire Portland metro area.
Streetcars offer high-quality transportation and greater capacity than buses for about the same fare rates, yet they are quieter, less polluting, and easier to get on and off. Streetcars also help create great places, the sort of places where people like to walk around, shop, dine, and visit with their neighbors. They attract riders who might otherwise choose to drive. They help connect neighborhoods. For all these reasons, Arlington is choosing to invest in streetcars, just as it invested a half-century ago in Metro Rail. Arlington's investment in metro, considered risky at the time, transformed our community from a fading inner suburb to a dynamic model of transit-oriented development. Today, Arlington is known for its lively urban villages and successfully coexist with its world-class single-family home neighborhoods. Won't you join us in this next phase of Arlington's Smart Growth Journey? To learn more about Arlington Streetcars, and about upcoming public meetings, funding, and more, visit arlingtonva.us/streetcar.
Good evening, everyone. It is 7:00 PM, and we will start right on time. Welcome, and thank you for joining us this evening. My name is Walter Tejada, Chairman of the Arlington County Board. Joining me tonight are all of my colleagues, who'll be making their way soon. Mary Hines, Chris Zimmerman, Vice Chairman Jay Fousset, and our other newest board member, Libby Garbi, will be joining us shortly, I'm sure. I think I saw him on there. This year, at my request, the County Board is hosting a series of Neighborhood TownHalls across Arlington on any subject related to our community. However, tonight's Townhall has only one single focus: a streetcar. We know that there are lots of questions out there, and this evening is devoted to answering those questions. The County Manager is also with us, Barbara Donellen. Tonight is an informational session. We are going to share lots of details with you about the years of planning and public processes that led to the Board's choice for streetcars as the preferred transit alternative for Columbia Pike. We will talk about why the streetcar is a great investment for our community. We are going to talk about the community's vision for transforming the Pike into a more walkable, transit-oriented Main Street, about our funding strategy, and about our aggressive plan to preserve affordable housing along the Columbia Pike Corridor. More importantly, we will answer your questions. More than half of the evening will be devoted to the question-and-answer session. Sign language interpreters and Spanish-language interpreters are available to assist this evening. So I'm going to ask them to stand, and I'm going to introduce them, Tiffany Brown and Kelsey Robinson. Spanish-language translation will be made by Ángeles Estrada and Charlene Marela. After my brief overview, our Transportation Director will give a more detailed presentation, and then Board members and staff will take your questions. By the end of the evening, I hope you'll have a clear understanding of why we believe that a modern Columbia Pike streetcar is an affordable, long-term strategic investment in Arlington's future. Now, I will turn over to our County Manager, Barbara Donellen, who will introduce our staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have some terrific staff with us tonight, and I just want to introduce them. Dennis Leach is our Deputy Director of Department of Environmental Services and Transportation Director. He oversees one of the nation's largest transportation demand management and commuter services organization. Dennis has more than 25 years' experience in transportation planning, policy, and management consultant. He is frequently asked as a transportation expert to speak at transportation planning and smart growth conferences focused on transit-oriented development and multi-transportation system performance. Steve Del Judas is the head of our transit operations. Mr. Del Judas's management has seen the ART Arlington Transit Buses rise dramatically from less than 1 million riders in 2006 to more than 2.5 million riders today. He is a former mayor of Tacoma Park and former member of Prince George's County Council. David Christiel is our housing development specialist. He has more than 25 years' experience in working with affordable housing and community development. Mr. Christiel has had a direct involvement in the preservation and creation of nearly 2,500 committed affordable housing units here in the county. Jennifer, Jennifer Smith, and I forgot both pages, so I'm sorry. Jennifer Smith is in our planning department. She has worked on three significant neighborhood plans, including two plans on Columbia Pike, and she's currently working on the implementation of the Columbia Pike Plan. Thank you very much. Doug Sarno is our moderator. Where's Doug?
Down here.
All right, Doug, what's the name of the firm?
Farms Facilitation.
Farms Facilitation is where Doug works. He's very familiar with the county. He's worked with us on a lot of projects, and he will be facilitating the meeting tonight. So I turn it over to you, Doug.
Thank you, Mrs. Donellen. I just want to quickly introduce myself. My job here tonight is going to be to keep us on time and to respect everybody's time and to respect everybody's participation. We're going to have a question-and-answer session after the two brief presentations that the Chairman referenced. The total of these introductory remarks and the two presentations should take well less than an hour, so we're giving over most of the meeting to Q&amp;A. And we'll have microphones in the audience to move up and down and get to everyone in trying to keep this moving. The logistics of the room and the way it's organized really prevent us from taking real-time questions, so if you would please hold your questions until we get to the Q&amp;A. As I said, we will have microphones, and if you please wait till we get a microphone to you so that everybody can hear the question and then everybody can hear the answer. We really do want to facilitate as many questions as possible and get as many people to ask questions as possible and get as much information across as we possibly can. We recognize that there still may be questions that don't get answered. We have comment cards. If you, there's plenty of them in the back of the room or where you came in. If you didn't get one, we'll get more to you, and we'll put everything up on the web, and I'll explain more about how that process is going to work when we get to the Q&amp;A. At this time, Chairman Todd is going to give us a brief overview of the streetcar decision, and then we'll have a presentation of more detail about how the streetcar is going to be working and how that decision is going to be implemented. So Chairman Tejada.
Thank you, Doug. All right, so let's go right to it. Our decision to add modern streetcars to Arlington's transportation mix grew out of our commitment to a smart growth vision that dates back to the 1960s. That was when Arlington made the crucial decision to embrace Metro Rail and to fight for closely spaced stations down the heart of our commercial corridors. Originally, a Metro Rail line was planned for Columbia Pike, which was already a major Northern Virginia corridor, but that plan was eventually abandoned. But the Pike desperately needs more and better transit in its transit that will serve the community's vision of transforming the Pike into a Main Street, transit that will promote high-quality, mixed-use development, economic, and environmental sustainability, affordable living, and diversity. The planned streetcar line is the affordable transit choice for the Pike that will meet our community's goals. Tonight, we will focus on the long-range plans for Columbia Pike. We will also touch on the Route 1 corridor, high-quality, mixed-use development, economic, and environmental sustainability, affordable living, and diversity. The planned streetcar line is the affordable transit choice for the Pike that will meet our community's goals. Tonight, we will focus on the long-range plans for Columbia Pike. We will also touch on the Route 1 corridor. Our plans arrive at the same conclusion for both areas. Streetcars are at the center of the visions for the future of Route 1 corridor and of Columbia Pike. Why? Streetcars have the capacity we need to handle the growth. We all know it's coming. They offer a smooth, comfortable, accessible ride that will encourage people to get out of their cars and to use transit. More people using transit will mean less traffic congestion in these busy areas. They encourage developers to invest in remaking these corridors into great urban spaces. The high-quality redevelopment they encourage will increase property values and expand our tax base. In a post-BRAC era, when the federal government is slashing spending and our neighbors in the region are beginning to follow Arlington's smart growth planning approach, we need to remain competitive. High-quality transit is essential for Arlington's continued economic success. We plan to build the two lines that will connect at Pentagon City, a busy center that connects to the region's transit network. One line will run from Pentagon City to Crystal City and on to Potomac Yard. The other will stretch along Columbia Pike from Pentagon City to the skyline area of Fairfax County. The two lines will connect population and job centers to each other and to the region. Both corridors will have buses, but buses alone cannot provide the transit capacity and predictability that we need to transform these areas. By themselves, buses cannot handle the projected ridership. By themselves, buses will not serve the development envisioned in our master plans. The County has voted, the County Board, has voted multiple times for streetcars because streetcars are a long-term strategic investment. Streetcars will benefit our entire community for generations to come, just as our strategic investment in metro has benefited generations of Arlingtonians. Back in the 60s, some in our community worried that metro was too costly an investment for Arlington. They feared that it would bring growth that we could not control, but just the opposite happened. The investment in metro helped Arlington manage growth and pay for the great public spaces, facilities, and services that we all enjoy today. So how did we decide that a modern streetcar was right for the Route 1 corridor? We did that through a community planning process that developed the Crystal City Sector Plan, a 40-year blueprint for transforming Crystal City into a more complete urban community. A streetcar is at the heart of the vision put forth in that plan. So let's talk about what a modern streetcar offers for the Pike. Capacity. Streetcars, cars, carry significantly more riders than buses. Buses alone cannot carry the volume of passengers we expect on the Pike. The streetcar will provide more capacity now in the medium range and in the long range than any bus system could along the Pike. Permanence. Fixed rail attracts high-quality development in a way that buses, with routes that change, do not. Affordability. Less expensive and less disruptive than heavy rail. Streetcars gives us the capacity we need at a price we can afford. Preservation. Streetcars fits the community's vision for more density along the Pike, but far less than that of the metro corridors. It will encourage the right blend of high-quality, new residential, and mixed-use development and preservation of historic buildings and of affordable housing. Connections. The streetcar will better connect job centers in the skyline area of Fairfax to Pentagon City, Crystal City, and the district, and Arlington to the regional transportation network. Our metro system does a good job of connecting the suburbs to the core. Our streetcar lines will start to make connections between the major metro rail lines. Sustainability. Streetcars cuts air pollution by reducing both vehicle miles traveled and greenhouse gas emissions and encourages sustainable economic growth. The community has spent many years planning the Pike. Working with county government and planning consultants, the community developed several long-range plans aimed at making the Pike a more walkable, bikeable, transit-oriented Main Street. The Columbia Pike Revitalization Plan in 2002, the Farms-Based Code that guides commercial development along the Pike in 2003, the Street Space Task Force Plan in 2004, the Transit Plan in 2006, also known as the Local Alternative Analysis, a second transit analysis to meet federal requirements in 2012, and again last year, the Columbia Pike Neighborhood Area Plan. You can learn more about the history of the Pike planning in our handouts to support these plans the County Board voted after an extensive public process in 2006 and again in July of 2012 to build a streetcar on Columbia Pike in partnership with Fairfax County. And hand-in-hand with our commitment to a Pike streetcar is our commitment to maintain the Pike's diversity, affordability, history, and unique character. It is critically important to me, to my colleagues on the County Board, and to our community as a whole, that we preserve our stock of affordable housing along the Columbia Pike corridor. The Columbia Pike Neighborhoods Area Plan is a 30-year plan to keep the Pike diverse and affordable. It was developed by the community, working with county government. The Board adopted this plan last year. This is Arlington's most ambitious affordable housing initiative. Its goal is to preserve the affordable housing that exists today along the Pike. It will require a significant investment by our community, and we are committed to making that investment. The streetcar is a tool to help preserve and create affordable housing along Columbia Pike. Our goal is for the Pike to become an even better place for those who live there, own businesses there now, and will remain a great place to live, work, and play for generations. Obviously, there's a lot more to talk about tonight. County staff will go into more detail about the points I just raised. Staff will also go into great detail about how we plan to pay for streetcars. We also have handouts available on financing and other core information about this very important investment in our county's future. You can also find lots of information on our county website, arlingtonva.us, and please use the word "streetcar" for searching. After the staff's presentation, my colleagues and I look forward to answering your questions. We thank you all for joining us here tonight, for caring so much about our community, and for listening to our presentations. So now let me turn it over to our County Manager again, Ms. Barbara Donellen, for staff's presentation. Ms. Donellen.
I'm just going to quickly take a break here because I understand there's a bunch of people standing in the back and standing outside, and there are seats down here. If people want to make their way down, we've got available seats for those in the back who want to come down and listen to the presentations. Throughout these rows, there's a few seats over here. Quite a few in here. Falls need seats. Yep. I think everybody. You folks want to come down, or you're happy in the back? We've got, we've got a bunch of seats right here. Okay. And there's a lot of seats upstairs in the balcony if people want to make their way up there. All right. Thank you. Barbara.
Thanks, Doug. I've worked for the county a long time, about 30 years. And in that time, I've seen this community change into a dynamic, transit-oriented community that is the envy of others in this region. When I actually first started the county, one of my first jobs was the opening of the East Falls Church Metro Station. This community has made a lot of brave decisions over the years, and it has persevered with the transit-oriented vision of what smart growth can bring to our residents. I believe we're at the beginning of our next great step towards fulfilling that vision. So Dennis Leach, our Transportation Director, will share this vision in more detail in this next presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good evening. This presentation will give you...
Hold the mic up close.
A little taller. This presentation will give you a little bit more detail that builds upon the presentation by Chairman Tejada in terms of how Arlington got to the point is that today with the streetcar There's a lot of material to cover, and I will try to be succinct. It starts with sustainability and what that means for Arlington. Arlington is at the center of the Washington region, a region that's quite dynamic and a region that continues to grow. And being at the core of that region, that also means growth and change for Arlington. Arlington has a long history of smart growth planning that dates all the way back to the 70s. That diagram is actually from 1972, when the county was planning around potential Metro Rail corridors. These planning principles have been very important for the growth and change in this That's also true with the transportation strategies to really expand travel options for our residents, workers, and visitors over time. We arrive at those transportation choices through many different tools, but transit is a vitally important set of services for this community. It's what Arlington is built on. We've experienced substantial growth in transit ridership just from '96 to 2013. Over 40% of all transit trips in the state of Virginia on an average weekday start or end in Arlington. That's approximately 300,000 people a day that were able to move without additional So what does the next generation of smart growth look like? We're in a dynamic region that continues to change and continues to grow. As is the case with our long tradition, it is about transit and continuing to make investments in critical corridors. Columbia Pike is one of those key corridors. Columbia Pike is one of those key corridors. I next want to turn to a little bit more detail on Columbia Pike. The corridor extends from Pentagon City to Bailey's Cross Road. It has significant population and employment, and it's a highly diverse community. It has the highest bus ridership of any bus corridor in Virginia right now with sixteen thousand trips. The community along Columbia Pike has a vision for this corridor that has been worked and refined and detailed over many years. It involves revitalization, creating a complete community that's pedestrian-oriented and preserving what's best about the Pike. As is Arlington's tradition, planning and community development and transportation go hand in hand year after year. These studies track back to the late nineties and continue today. It means decades of community involvement. It is not a one-off. It is year in, year out with many different processes. In terms of the transit corridor and the investment, we didn't just do one study, we did two. We often hear the question, "Why not bus? Why not RT?" And this is an option that some communities have chosen. It has a wide variety of applications. But without substantial investment, including dedicated lanes, many experts advise that the benefits can't be fully achieved. And having gone through an extensive community process, widening Columbia Pike to provide dedicated lanes is not feasible. Want to touch a little bit on the first round of the Transit Analysis from 2004 to 2006, an incredibly extensive community process with varying types of, of meetings and formats, including a five-day design charrette on the Pike. But ultimately, out of that process, with Fairfax County and Womata as a full partner, streetcar with bus was recommended as the preferred investment for this corridor due to increased ridership, reduced travel time, and complementing, and most importantly, complementing the community's goals. Both the County Board and the Fairfax Board of Supervisors voted to support this option in 2006. But that wasn't all. We did it again. To comply with the Federal Transit Administration requirements, we went through a full-blown environmental process from 2009 to 2012, again with an extensive community process. And again, both the Arlington County Board and the Fairfax County Board reaffirmed the selection of rail and bus as the preferred investment strategy for this corridor. Let me go a little bit more into some of the reasons for streetcar. It has a number of benefits over bus. It is about capacity. We have to be able to carry more people in a sustainable way in the future. And metro rail, heavy rail, is not a viable option for this corridor. Growth is coming. It is about accommodating growth, but in a sustainable way. Over half of all the population growth in Arlington is going to occur in the Columbia Pike, Pentagon City, and Crystal City corridor. And most of that growth is within a short walk of the two planned lines. Day of opening in 2016, twenty-six thousand people is the estimated ridership we need to be able to carry, rising to over thirty thousand by 2030. We're at sixteen thousand today. And in the bottom of the slide, you see some of the other major bus corridors in the region. They, they all happen to be in the District of Columbia. Georgia Avenue is the highest ridership corridor at eighteen thousand with express bus, articulated bus. Benning Road is, is a fairly close second and Sixteenth Street. The district is in the process of converting both the top two corridors to streetcar lines. Streetcars have been shown to attract new riders, and that is important for the future of Columbia Pike if we're to maintain levels of traffic at, at today's levels or less. So it's... And again, it is about supporting the community vision, and some of that vision is taking place today. Over a million square feet of new development has already occurred on Columbia Pike that is more urban and pedestrian and transit-oriented than what it has replaced, following the County Board's adopted Form-Based Code. It is also about making connections, connecting a major housing and employment center in Bailey's Cross Road in Fairfax, connecting to Pentagon City, our number-one retail center, and into another major mixed-use center in Crystal City and Potomac Yard, with connections at Pentagon City Metro, Crystal City Metro, and VRE. We are not alone in Arlington, and I think that's very important. Other jurisdictions in this region are investing in rail. The District of Columbia is currently building its first rail lines and plans a thirty-seven-mile system, replacing most of their high-capacity bus corridors with rail. The state of Maryland, working with Montgomery County and Prince George's, is advancing the Purple Line to connect some of its major suburban centers. In the Metro Strategic Plan, it references the potential of streetcars as another layer of transit to help alleviate congestion on some connections in the core of the region. Streetcars are also being advanced in other parts of the country, so in this region, we're not alone. There's a lot of activity in terms of investing in high-quality surface transit, and specifically rail. This slide shows cities that have made financial commitments to streetcar lines, and this slide actually conveys those that are in the planning stage. Streetcar investments, rail investments, can deliver substantial economic value, and there are few places in the United States that demonstrate that better than Arlington. Arlington's tax base has benefited greatly from its investments in rail over the long It's also about fulfilling the vision, and we keep coming back to that. The community has invested many years of work defining a preferred vision for this really important part of Arlington that is diverse, affordable, walkable, and transit-oriented. We often hear in these difficult economic times, "Can we afford this?" This is a little primer on our Transportation Capital Program. This comes from our County Board Adopted CIP, Capital Improvement Program, a ten-year plan, one point one six-two billion dollars, with a variety of sources, including state aid, federal aid, and something called the Transportation Capital Fund, and I'm going to go into a little bit more explanation on this. This is a commercial and industrial real estate tax. It means it is not levied on homeowners of this county, and it is legislatively restricted to only be spent on transportation projects in Arlington. So this is a levy imposed on our business sector. Go to the expenditure side. You see general obligation bonds that comes before the voters, roughly twenty-four percent of our program. Almost all of that funding goes for only two things. It goes to pay our basic commitments to metro at fifteen percent, and ten percent goes to paving. And of those general obligation bonds, that twenty-four percent, half of that support, comes from the commercial sector. We use that dedicated funding source, that commercial real estate tax, to leverage outside money that otherwise would not come to Arlington to make our community better. We track how much money we're able to pull into Arlington, and in Fiscal thirteen, we were able to leverage twenty million dollars of federal and state aid that would not otherwise come here if we were not able to invest upfront local dollars, primarily the commercial real estate tax. And I want to show you how this works on a project-specific basis. The largest project in our program at the moment is the Roslin Second Entrance. This is the busiest station in Northern Virginia, carrying thirty-six thousand people a day. This is building a full second entrance and making that station more accessible, forty-nine million dollars. It is going to be delivered this year by Arlington on time and on budget, and almost no general obligation fund money is on this project. You can see local dollars, one percent, federals, twenty-one, and transportation capital, thirty... I think it was thirty-six or thirty-eight percent. Want to go to the second-largest project in our portfolio, also being advanced this year, which is rebuilding the front of Pentagon City in front of the metro and the mall. Federal share, sixty-nine percent, Transportation Capital Fund, nineteen percent, local share, general obligation bonds, nine percent. This project is also expected to be delivered on time and on budget. The Columbia Pike Funding Plan is really grounded in that larger program approach, which is to use dedicated local transportation funding to leverage outside aid. This is a joint project of Fairfax County and Arlington, so Fairfax has a local portion. Arlington's local portion comes from the commercial real estate tax, and this funding program also includes state and federal aid. Infrastructure is expensive. These are investments, they're not investments for one year or five years. These are thirty, forty, fifty-year investments. These are some of the investments that were made in this community in the seventies when the tax base wasn't nearly so robust. What you see is the Columbia Pike Streetcar Project is really at the mid-range of a host of regional projects. I'll point out a few. Our neighbor in Alexandria's number-one project is the infill station at Potomac Yard, estimated to cost up to four hundred and ninety-six million dollars for one infill station. In Maryland, the corridor city's busway is an eight hundred and twenty-eight million-dollar project. And then we have smaller projects. Our Roslin project is at the smaller end of this regional scale. Courthouse Road, Arlington Boulevard, built with VDOT partnership, is at the smaller end. But infrastructure is expensive, but worth doing as a long-term investment in the community. We also hear questions about, "Can we afford the general operation of, of these kind of systems? And is this raising our tax rate this year?" So this slide actually captures an eight-year trend for the transportation program in Arlington from 2006 to 2014. There has been very little growth in net tax support for the program, even though services such as art and star and signals and the many other things we do have dramatically expanded. Net tax support has actually dropped from forty-nine percent to twenty-eight percent, meaning very little additional cost for households. And let me put that in perspective. Our metro contribution this year is twenty-eight million dollars of local support. Our contribution for school bus transportation is sixteen-point-two million dollars this year. This is about investing in our future, increasing capacity, providing permanence. It's affordable. It makes those regional connections. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Leach, and thank you, Mr. Chairman. And as promised, we kept the prepared remarks to a, a lot less than an hour. It gives us about an hour and a half for Q and A. We want this to go as smoothly and efficiently as possible. In doing so, I'm really just going to ask you for three things. When you get the microphone and you ask your question, please be specific, ask a very specific question so that people can be prepared to answer them. Be succinct, if you would, so we can get as many questions asked as possible. And, and please be civil. You know, let's, let's appreciate that there's a lot of different opinions and a lot of different ideas in the room, and we want to hear them all, and we want to be respectful to them all. Uh, we're going to have two microphones available. Hunter and Kari are each going to be handling a microphone, one in each aisle. So if you want a microphone, we'll ask that you please raise your hand. Once you have a microphone, I will, I will call on you, and we'll go back and forth so that we can keep this as efficient as possible and, and keep on time. Once I, once you ask your question, then if you'd please hand your mic back so that we can stage for, for the next one as we go, and then I'll direct the question to either the Board or the staff as appropriate, and ask them to be as, as direct as they can be to make sure the right person is, is getting the, the information to you. Also, tonight's event is being videoed. Uh, we will have a complete video of this online, so the, the record will be there. And as I said, if we don't get to your question tonight, we will have comment cards, and we will have those questions answered online and available to you as we, as we go through that. If there's a Spanish speaker that asks a question, we will have that question translated and, and the answer translated as well, so that everybody can hear all the questions. With that, we'll start here with this gentleman.
Thank you. Thank you, members of the Board, for being here this evening. My name is Steve Huntune. My family's been here since nineteen sixty-two. A lot of questions I wanted to ask, but I think one that maybe ties into the sighting of Portland as being a model project for, for this project is to ask if any of, any of you all know the, the average mile-per-hour speed of the Portland Streetcar Project? And I, and I know the answer, if you don't, so...
Well, I'll, I'll, I'll direct that to, to staff. They've, they've been studying that, that system.
I, I think it was reported recently by some in the press that...
You have to pull the mic up.
I think that it's been reported by one group as being six-point-seven miles per hour. I don't think that's the speed that was reported in the Alternatives Analysis for our streetcar system that we're proposing. I will note that the Portland system has stops that are much closer than is being proposed for the Columbia Pike system. It stops very frequently, and that adds to its lack of speed. In any event, that's what I've seen, close.
Six-point-eight.
Yes, ma'am. And as Mr. Huntune did, if you would please say your name, that would be helpful. Thank you.
My name is Julie Agarwa. I had two specific questions. I was really focused that this was a vision from like thirty years ago, and that's why we're going forward. If we made a mistake thirty years ago, is that a reason to continue going forward? Because things have changed in the last thirty years as far as options? That's what I heard today. And the second thing is... The second question is, the develop, the development that you're talking, the developers that are going to be along these corridors. I know the corridor by Potomac Yards has already been bought by a developer, and they're selling those townhomes for over a million dollars. So I'm not sure how that's going to help with affordable housing.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna direct the vision question to the Board.
The questioner asked if this, something about this being a vision from thirty years ago, and I'd say it's not from thirty years ago. The work for Columbia Pike was done within the last decade, and many people who are, even some who are here in this room tonight, were very much involved and continue to be involved. The Columbia Pike Initiative began in nineteen ninety-eight. The original concept plan was approved in 2002. Then the community was very much involved in creating the specific rules for what kind of development we wanted to have, and that was initially approved in 2003. Then we had a process to look at the street space, and that was approved in, let's say, 2004. Then we were looking at transit through this, and the original Transit Plan came in 2006. So specifically for streetcar, it was done in 2006, and then for reasons that were referred to before, we did it all over again. At the same time, we were doing the final part of land use planning and the housing analysis, and that concluded last July. So this is actually very fresh vision planning. Now, the part that goes back, of course, is that this... Now, the part that goes back, of course, is that this county has a commitment that goes back more than thirty years. It goes back really forty, forty-five years, when the original commitments to metro were made. And that involved a great deal of, again, community involvement, staff work, and the adoption of a vision that has really come to fruition in places like the Roslin-Bolston-Carter. There are many parallels between that kind of planning and what we've gotten and what we've been trying to do since that time. But it isn't just an old plan that's been sitting on the shelf and we're following. We're constantly refreshing it. We have new processes to even reexamine existing plans, the sector plans. Many of them have been reviewed and have new versions, like Clarendon, for instance, was redone a few years ago. And so it's an ongoing thing. It's an ongoing development of a vision to which the initial commitment was made a long time ago.
And then on the affordable housing...
Could I add something, Mr. Sarno?
Well, let me, let's add to the part about affordable housing. I think that, and you mentioned Potomac Yards, the difference between our project, our process now in Potomac Yard, there was no deliberate effort to, for affordable housing in Potomac Yard. We have gone through a very lengthy Columbia Pike Neighborhood Area Plan to develop a comprehensive effort about housing in general, but specifically, we set out to protect all of the affordable housing that we find in the Columbia Pike corridor. This was a very significant part of approving that plan, and we're doing something that no other jurisdiction in the country that we know of has tried, and that is to bring a modern transit system to their community while also protecting all of the affordable housing. So that is a very significant point. Tell you, for me, I almost had some sleepless nights thinking about how we were going to do this. But I am very thankful for everyone to participate in the very lengthy process, the community, different organizations, because with the community participation, we were able to hammer the agreements that we will protect all of the affordable housing, and the incentives down the line for new development would call as part of development, affordable housing will be a part of that as well. So that, I'm glad you asked that question, is a very significant point for us, and we have it as part of our Columbia Pike Neighborhoods Area Plan.
It's a good question, and my colleagues, I don't necessarily disagree with what they've said. I think the point of your question is, you know, this is a good time before we actually make a decision if you want to examine the data you've got now. And actually, as far as community involvement goes, back in 2010, if you look at the study, the description of the community involvement says that "The purpose of the meetings was to provide the public with an update on the progress of the project," that's the streetcar project, "and to solicit input on the alignment, station locations, operations, and maintenance facilities." So there was community involvement, but it was then they were only supposed to talk about the streetcar. And one of my issues, I think, as you know, is that we've not done a cost-benefit analysis. So a lot's been talked about the streetcar, and we've heard good things here, but we've not looked at another alternative and what that could do, and there are examples around the country that could do it for a lot less. I want, I think we all have the same goal here. We do. My board colleagues and I don't disagree. But when there's a less expensive alternative, it's much more likely, actually, to leave some money in our budget to help out with affordable housing. I don't believe we can afford to support affordable housing and the streetcar at the same time.
This gentleman, this gentleman here. Yes, sir.
Thank you. My name is Almich. I've lived in South, my family and I have lived in South Arlington since 1976. I have, I've heard you talk about affordable housing. I also want to hear you talk about protecting small businesses along the Pike. The little places in the strip mall at George Mason and the Pike, the little Bolivian Bakery there, the Columbia Pike Thrift Shop, Bob and Edith's, an institution in Arlington. I haven't heard anything about how are we going to, you can't protect them. I mean, if you're going to bring in developers, they don't, you know, these are low-rent businesses, okay? That's number one. Number two, if this is such a good idea, why don't you let the county vote on it?
Okay. If I can, okay. Both. Okay. Okay. If I could get your attention, I hear your passion, and I want to... Excuse me, excuse me, sir. We're trying, we are trying, we're trying to give as many people a chance to ask their questions, and I hear your passion. We want to hear your passion, but we also want to make sure we get to as many questions. So if we could just get to that one about the small business?
So let's start about small businesses. Actually, as we were working on the Columbia Pike Neighborhoods Plan for the last several years with people in the community, the issue of preserving small business and protecting small business is one that has, was kind of working its way through the whole plan, because many people feel exactly as you do, that these small businesses are part of the wonderful character of the Pike. When the board got to the end and we did our voting in July on the plan, we gave some additional direction to the manager. And one piece of that was that we wanted them to come back to us with strategies that we could use to protect and help sustain our small business sector. And so we're waiting for that work. I think it's supposed to come in the next eighteen months or so. Remember, you know, nothing's happening right now at this moment. We're still in planning stages. And it's very important to us that, as we move through this process, we continue to provide those spaces that work for new businesses, for entrepreneurs, and for our immigrant community. The question of why not voting, you know, there's no referendum tool that actually is available to the county board on matters like this. The voters under our form of government have the, under, this is under Virginia law. I'm sorry. We don't have a tool that lets us have a referendum on whether or not to do a project that does not involve general obligation bonds. And as you heard Mr. Leach explain, we have a funding plan for this that does not involve the bonds which would be supported by taxes by homeowners and residents. And so we really, we simply don't have a tool that lets us do that. That's the answer.
Okay. I want to add one more thing on the small business. One thing small businesses need is customers. And so part of the goal of improving transit service is to bring more customers to those businesses. And in terms of the development, it's important to understand that this isn't just random development. We're not just saying we want development for development's sake or whatever anybody can build. The community spent the better part of a decade working on a specific plan on what kind of development we actually wanted. And so we have a code in place that does that, and as long as the people who own the land choose to use it, as opposed to doing whatever they can do by right, then we get certain kinds of benefits. One of the benefits we get are places for small businesses. We get more space created, which is the other thing small businesses need. And we've already seen, with the limited amount of projects that have come forward under the new plan, we've already seen new spaces for new businesses. Some of those spaces are occupied by longtime small businesses that have been on the Pike and needed a new location and got a new location as a result. And some of them are occupied by new small businesses that are locally owned. So the plan does include the provision for a space for small business, and it is intended to be a tool to promote small business, so we can actually have more small business opportunities for people in our community up and down the Pike.
Okay.
I'd like to, Mr. Sarno, I'd like to respond too, if I might. I realize I'm going to end up talking in Fremont because I, you know, I'm in a different place. Just real quickly, the issue of small businesses is a very important one to all of us, and it's a very good point. I believe with Bus Rapid Transit, actually, that will get as much development going along the Pike as the streetcar, possibly even more, so that that issue is still there. And what you've heard my colleagues talk about and our staff is part of the idea is that you'll get benefits, economic benefits, from that growth, that we can then help to support both affordable housing and small businesses. The issue is, you can get the same benefit for a lot less money, which means there's a whole lot more money left to actually help small businesses, affordable housing, education, or whatever else we need to do. In addition, my biggest concern about small businesses is even in presentations in favor of the streetcar, there's a talk about how their business is just waiting to see what we do. Well, they're just waiting, and when we move the utilities, which we've got to do, and dig ditches all the way along, and that's going to be very involved, and then we put down tracks and we put down wires, no matter how good the signage is, no matter what we do, people are not going to be able to get to those small businesses, and they can't survive. So those businesses are waiting till they go out of business. So there's, and I think all my colleagues, and I'm sure Mr. Dahada will be asking for a plan about this, but I can't see how it could possibly work because they can't last.
So that was sort of the flip side of the small business question, and let me give the staff some time, because I know they've been thinking about that issue.
Couple of points on disruption. Most of the streetcar systems are built in very small segments, 600 feet at a time, one block at a time. And like every other transportation project that is done, the contractor is required by law to submit a maintenance of access and traffic plan. And that is approved by county staff and enforced by county staff. And yes, sometimes there are mistakes, but the assumption should not be that this would be any more disruptive. In fact, it probably is going to be less disruptive than most other projects because it is built in short segments, 600 feet at a time, and that segment can usually be built within a month or less.
Mr. Delters, does that include questions?
Let me, let me address, let me address one other question. A recent study by the Government Accounting Office documented that Bus Rapid Transit projects that do not have dedicated lanes are less likely to result in economic development benefits. And that is a government study that was done by the GAO. And as Mr. Leach pointed out, we don't have the option of a dedicated lane for Bus Rapid Transit on Columbia Pike. And without that, most experts, and now the Government Accounting Office, have found you're not going to get the same kind of benefits.
Okay, I've got this gentleman here waiting. Yes, sir.
Good evening. I'm John Antonelli, and I'd like to know how many people here tonight do not support the trolley. Would you please stand? Stand up. And Libby, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. We have our next question over here. Yes, sir.
Thank you. My name is David Hunzberger. I was born and grew up in the District of Columbia, and I had a lot of experience as a younger person following streetcars down Wisconsin Avenue. Things were much better when they moved to buses away from streetcars. I'm astounded to hear that cities are moving back, and I wonder what people are experiencing. I have ridden bicycles on streetcar tracks, and they are dangerous. The little slots are hard for cyclists to cross at times. I have lived in Brussels, Belgium, where they had streetcars and buses. You always preferred the bus over the streetcar because it ended up getting there much faster, especially when there were fender benders and all the streetcars had to stop, or especially on difficult days when a streetcar would slow down and block, and the buses could drive around it, the streetcars could not. So my question to you is, could we please do a rigorous cost-benefit study against electric overhead buses or natural gas buses and not compare streetcars with nothing at all, which is some of the comparisons we're seeing, or not compare streetcars with other bogus comparisons? Anyway, I'm open-minded at the end of the day. If it could be possibly shown that a streetcar is better than a bus, I would go with it. But all my evidence, and I have a background as a World Bank economist, I've seen a lot of bogus studies in my life. I'm just curious. I'm just curious. I would love to see a rigorous study done impartially, not by someone who's already in bed with a streetcar. Could you please do it? Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to direct that one over to the staff to talk about the studies that have been done.
The study that was just completed under the Federal Transit Administration guidance was rigorously overseen by FTA. And the TSM2 alternative was defined by FTA as the very best bus system that could be developed without dedicated lanes. And there was a rigorous comparison of both the TSM2, the articulated bus alternative, and the streetcar. It met FTA's rigorous requirements, and it was approved by them. Every single detail of the modeling, every single detail of the systems. And as I said, FTA wanted to define the very best bus system we could without dedicated lanes, and that's what we did. So there was a fairly rigorous analysis of both bus, as best we could do, and the streetcar system.
Yes. Yes, sir.
Yes, yes.
Yes. The alternatives analysis, the alternatives analysis and the environmental assessment, which is the second half of the study, which meets the requirements for environmental clearance of the project under the National Environmental Policy Act, is a combined document. There are two volumes. The first volume is a summary document. The second volume includes all of the technical studies. They're both available online. The Federal Transit Administration, the Federal Transit Administration...
Okay. Please don't chat out questions, because I have a lot of people that are waiting patiently. A follow-on to your question is fine, like that gentleman did, but let's keep it going. Yes. Yes, sir.
I'm a renter on Columbia Pike. I don't know how many other actual renters we have from Columbia Pike. How many of you on the board are renters in the region? I live in one of the lower-priced units because when I lost my job at the end of 2010, and this is the closest job to where me and my wife used to live that I could find. We moved here, and she took a long time to find a job. It was part-time, so we struggled for a while, and we're both educated. My wife has a master's. It's expensive. I mean, I don't, I don't have to, you know, to quote a modern-day prophet, the rent's too damn high. But getting back to the people that live around me in Columbia Pike, I live around in the most diverse zip code in Virginia. And a lot of the people that live around me, they don't work a nine-to-five like me, and they work weird hours. They work second shift, they work third shift, they work for ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen dollars an hour, part-time. Maybe they don't get health care. That's what a lot of the people along there are facing. And this is the only place they can afford to live in the area, aside from maybe a few places in Alexandria, but who knows what's going to happen there. And I just want to know, with all the stuff that you've been working on and with all this issue, why didn't you focus on fixing this housing crisis first? Why, what have you been doing up until now to work on stabilizing rent prices, doing something about the problem with density, doing something about the problem with the fact that, you know, rent keeps going up with no end in sight? What has, why is it that we're hearing now, oh, we got to do the streetcar first, and there will be something with housing in there, but you got to trust us, we got to do the streetcar first? Why have, I mean, why hasn't the state of our most vulnerable residents that live and work in Arlington been number one as opposed to chickens in backyards and million-dollar
Jake?
Sure. That's an interesting question. I guess after you asked if any of us rented, I don't now, but I did when I first lived here, just to let you know. In the River House place, River Place, River House down in Pentagon City, it was a, used to walk across the field that's now Fashion Center to get to the metro. So I rented, and now I do own. Your question is mostly about affordable housing, I believe. I can tell you from my work, I was appointed by the last two governors, Kane and Warner, to the Virginia Housing Development Authority, which is responsible for promoting affordable housing throughout the Commonwealth. There's no question, everyone that works for the VHDA would tell you that if there is one jurisdiction that has the most commitment to affordable housing in the Commonwealth of Virginia, it's hands-down Arlington County. It's just, it is a fact. We make a more substantial financial commitment than any place around as a community. There are a lot of communities around this state, by the way, who don't want affordable housing. That's a huge change we made here many decades ago. But yes, at the same time, when you decide through a community process, it started here in 1998, to create a new vision, Columbia Pike felt a little bit out, that all the attention was going to the Roslin-Bolston Corridor, all the investment, all the infrastructure, the metro and down through Crystal City, Columbia Pike was ready. The community... Columbia Pike was ready, the community was ready. They stepped forward and wanted to have a new vision. They participated. Not everyone, I'm not gonna ask who in here participated in that, but I will say that back in 1998, most of us on the board participated in that process. We actually went to meetings after meetings, and the community did. But when you invest in a community, when you, when you create a new vision, you do have to take into account the affordability, and that's why the, the plan that Walter talked about, no net loss, it's not every building that's there now will stay, but the property owners will have an opportunity to reinvest, and we have a goal of no net loss of affordable housing along that corridor. I'll tell you when you, one of the things I've found in, in the community is when rates go up, tax rates go up, people are upset because they're gonna pay more tax, and when rates go down, they're upset because the value of their property and their asset has gone down. We are in fact a community that has seen robust investment in our community that many communities around this Commonwealth would really appreciate having some of that investment.
And truth in advertising again, I, I firmly believe that a bus rapid transit system will probably do the same for development as the streetcar. So this isn't gonna change things. I mean, we're dealing with, um, issues that we can't change. It's gonna change on the Pike no matter what we do, and we do need to do something. Um, the issue for me, as I stated earlier, is that the bus rapid transit will do just as well, or better. I mean, we heard about the getting stuck behind things and that kinda stuff. Um, and that will lead, it will not eat up, eat into our revenue, both the capital fund that we've got, and I know it's a dedicated fund, but that fund could be used for a lot of other things too, that currently we like, that we have to put, you know, you, you have a pot of money here and a potty money here, if you fill that up, then you have to put something over here. If this is, it can move, money's fungible is my point here, it gets very complex, sorry, money's fungible.
This, this gentleman right here.
Yeah, yeah, excuse me. And then the FTA study, I just would like to say, I invite people to look at it. I don't know about it being rigorous, I think you could question that, but actually my issue was that when I looked at it, the, the, the data shows how similar TSM2 is to, how, how, how similar it is to the streetcar. And then sometimes the, the TSM2 actually performs better, they're almost even, you can see that. But it's five times more for the streetcar, and that's actually the issue. It's, it's, it is, is it really worth it? Thank you. Yeah, let me just, um...
Sorry Doug, I'm gonna, since I had the question, it'll just come back to me for most, just a moment, and I'm not gonna take issue with anything you said except one thing, just to, to give my view of this, and I think it's, um, the board's view. The fungibility is a term that's very, um, misused. Um, you move it from this part to that part, okay? We have to be really clear, as I believe our department director was, transportation director in the, in the presentation. Two hundred and fifty million dollars, yes. Thirty percent from the federal government is what we hope we're gonna get. Fourteen percent from Fairfax County, fourteen percent from the state, and that leaves forty-two percent for the county. That forty-two percent, about a hundred and five million dollars, is coming from the transit, transportation capital fund. The source of that fund is state authorized assessment on commercial industrial property. An additional twelve and a half cents on the value. It's what goes into that fund. We are by law required to spend that money on transportation. We cannot sit here and say that because we have an education problem or challenge, because we have human services or public safety, that you can take that money and use it for those services. You cannot do that. The state requirement is a maintenance of effort. If we stop spending local money, and you could see from the earlier slide, it hasn't really changed over the years, but if you start taking money from the general fund that was going to transportation and shift it to, to other things, that is not consistent with the state authorization of those funds. It cannot be used. You could use it for buses, you could use it for the Roslyn Metro, which we are using it for. There are other things that those monies are being used for, but you cannot argue that it could be used for human services, education, or other things. That's not a legitimate argument.
I wanna, I do wanna, I do wanna move us along. Mary?
Well, I just wanna, I wanna say one other thing, um, about the choice between the two, which is something that people are talking about. First thing I wanna say is, don't forget that the board has approved this project, and it is in for federal funding right now. That's where we are. That's where we are. But the second thing that I wanna say is, um, my colleague is saying that perhaps we will achieve exactly our plan without the streetcar. And what has brought me to the streetcar is an understanding of how many people that would mean, would come to Columbia Pike, and would need to get around on Columbia Pike. You may know I serve on the metro board right now, and, and metro and art, we're running buses every two to three minutes on Columbia Pike right now. In fact, I was at a metro meeting this morning, and I ran into the bus, the head of the bus department, and I, and Jack said, you know, I could, you could ask me for more buses, Mary. He said, but I can't schedule more buses on Columbia Pike. There's not enough capacity on the street for those buses. And we expect, if our plans and our desires for the kind of place that the community wants on Columbia Pike, we expect if that comes to fruition, we will add fourteen thousand more apartments and, and living units. That's a lot more people. And I have the guy who runs buses for metro all over the region telling me there's no more room for buses on Columbia Pike. For me, for me, the reason to move to streetcar is because of the additional capacity. If those people come, we don't want them in their cars. No one will move on Columbia Pike. We need to have enough capacity for the people who will come to live there to comfortably move around, using transit as a big part of how they do it. Doesn't mean they won't have cars. But, but if we stick with buses, we won't in the long time be able to move those folks. And I will tell you, as someone who's worked on capital projects in this community for eighteen years, that I have yet to see a project that got less expensive when we waited to do it.
Okay.
Good evening.
Yes, sir. All right. Hold, hold on folks, I wanna make sure we get all the, all the questions. Yes, sir.
Good evening, my name is Robert Atkins. When I first heard that quarter billion dollar figure, I asked some questions and found out, number one, it did not include any power substations for electricity to actually make these cars run. There was no bus barn, and the wages were not calculated on Davis Basin Bacon criteria, which would allow for federal funding. When are you going to make available hard data so someone can actually review these kind of issues?
I'm gonna turn that over to staff.
Uh, there are sites identified in the alternatives analysis, environmental assessment for traction power stations. Will they be the actual sites? That very much depends on our ability to talk with the property owners. But we have identified the need for four or five traction power stations. They're identified, and the costs are included in the cost estimate. The cost estimate was done under the federal rules and regulations and includes labor rates that would meet the Davis Bacon requirements. Uh, again, this study was done meeting all federal requirements, uh, and it was done and accepted by the Federal Transit Administration when it was approved by them, and it went out to the public. Um, and I don't know that I can say anymore.
Okay, thank you. Yes, ma'am, in the back.
My name is Teresa Flynn. I have lived in Arlington since nineteen sixty-three. I have owned a house in Columbia Forest since nineteen ninety-two. I'm sorry, but I have to ask, how is it not an ethics violation for a member of this board to be employed by a company that has financially benefited from this project?
I believe that was aimed at me. Let me be as specific as I can. I don't do much in the way of employment. I mostly work for you, and although this is nominally a part-time job, I have not done much in the way of outside work of any kind over the years. I do a little bit of consulting, and I try to do that in ways that won't in any way involve things that I do here. So I generally have done work outside this metropolitan area for people that have no occasion to be here or want anything here. Altogether, that still doesn't amount to very much. Frankly, most of what I do is not subject to disclosure or reporting under Virginia law, because it is so little. Nonetheless, I choose to disclose everything, because I am committed to complete transparency, and because my commitment to the ethics of this job is something of great importance to me. So, although in fact I have not had any item come before me as a member of the county board that would, would raise a question where I have to recuse, I chose to disclose something before anything like that happened, when I didn't have to, even though nothing had come before, because I wanted people to know that it could happen. And so for one job I did with a company in Canada that's affiliated with a company that could have business that comes before us, I chose not to wait, as I certainly legally could, and most people do, till something actually came in front of us to declare and recuse, as board members and state legislators have to do all the time, where we are part-time legislators. I chose to let people know ahead of time that that could happen. I think that's what you want your elected officials to do. Moreover, the economic statement of interest that we must file require you to say what your sources of income are for anything, anybody who pays you ten thousand dollars or more a year. Now, I don't actually have anything that qualifies to that, because I don't do enough work altogether to qualify for, I didn't make ten thousand dollars from all sources. I nonetheless choose to report everything I earned outside. And so my economic statement just does show that. I earned about, well, less than four thousand dollars total, almost all of which was from nonprofit and governmental agencies that have nothing to do with this area. I did one job last year, over the course of two days, on an hourly basis, for one company that is the subject of this inquiry. I'm not employed by them in any ongoing sense, but I did do some work on a project, and I did a couple days' work. My total billing for that was five hundred and ten dollars. That's how much I earned. Thank you.
Who's got the microphone in the back over here? Yes, yes, ma'am.
Hi, uh, my...
Please stand up.
My name's Lisa Ortiz, um, and my husband and I recently bought a house in Arlington Village right off Columbia Pike, and we've lived there for a few years. Sorry, we live in Arlington Village right off Columbia Pike, we just bought a house, yay. Welcome to a lifetime of mortgage payments. Um, I have what I hope are just a couple of simple questions. One is, how frequently you anticipate the streetcar will come, particularly in off-peak hours? Two is, can you please explain the difference between a trolley and a streetcar? Because it's clear there's some, people don't understand the difference, and they keep saying trolley, and I know it's not that. And three, what, did, did any of the board members actually take buses on Columbia Pike? Because I do every single day. Um, and I know what it's like to be on a bus where you can barely move, and you're pressed very uncomfortably up against people who you don't know. Um, and unless you've had that, that wonderful experience on a relatively regular basis, you don't know what the capacity issues are like.
The, um, one of the major benefits of the, uh, streetcar proposal is to increase the frequency of service in the off-peak period. Uh, we will be operating streetcars at the same frequency that we currently operate the buses during the peak period, which is every six minutes. So ten an hour in each direction. But the service in the off-peak will be, will also be at six minutes. And then in the later evening, it would be reduced to twelve to fifteen minutes as we approach the end of the operating, uh, day. But the system will operate in uniform with the Metro Rail system. So we will open and operate at the same hours that the Metro Rail system operates, uh, including the weekends. So that's a summary of the operations, uh, for the streetcar program. But again, one of the major benefits is that it significantly increases off-peak service.
Yeah, just, uh, the second question was about vehicle type, and I'm originally from Philadelphia.
Hold the microphone up.
Um, I'm, I'm originally from Philadelphia, I still have family there, and Philadelphia had trolleys, um, which were the old PCC cars. You had to step up into the car, they carried roughly forty people, maybe fifty. Contemporary streetcars, and I tend to call them trams, are low floor, high capacity. Uh, there's a range of vehicles on the market. They carry from the very low end, around one sixteen, and they go well over two hundred, um, with multi-door boarding and a lighting. And so they are very different. Um, but what I grew up with in Philadelphia, which was the old PCC cars, the workhorses back in the forties, fifties, and sixties. So I think that answers the second question.
Yeah, thank you. The, the, the only other point I'd make is that there are systems out there today that use what we call replica trolleys, and they operate very differently than contemporary modern streetcar systems. They, for example, serve tourists, and they use older cars by design because it's an attraction to tourists. And there are examples of that throughout the country, but that's not what we're talking about here. We're not talking about replica trolleys, we're not talking about old fashioned streetcars, we're talking about modern streetcars.
And there's a, there's a handout that, that replicated one of the slides that Dennis had up there, that showed different, uh, buses and streetcar designs with length and, and capacity.
Doug, Lisa had one other question, which was if any of us ride the bus on Columbia Pike.
Oh, yeah, does anyone wanna share their bus experience?
So as a longtime resident of Columbia Pike, I'm a regular user of the bus, I in fact took the bus to get here. Um, Art seventy-five, very useful, too, by the way. And every single day, a minimum of one member of my household is on a Metro bus on Columbia Pike.
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am. I was just gonna say, I'm sorry to interrupt, but just a quick one you asked. I actually don't ride the bicycle, bike, uh, the, the car or bus on Columbia Pike. I'm more likely to ride a bicycle on Columbia Pike, and, um, there are gonna be bike boulevards parallel to the areas. It has been thought through how to make bicycling safety safer. And, and the only other insight I will give, and this is from my own personal experience, I lived in San Francisco at one point and rode the bus, but here in Arlington, the bus comes about a block from my home, and I've only ridden it once. And I think, I'm a little embarrassed about that, but I do think it's something of a reality, that in fact, the statistics show, my experience validates, that if it is a fixed rail system, you are much more likely to get a higher ridership than a bus. Sad but true.
Well, I'm not gonna get too... So I used to ride a bus and commute that way all the time, I have not lately, and it all gets back to the point, what people want, I, I think that's what you, you wanna be comfortable, right? Well, one of the ways, the, one of the reasons streetcars have higher capacities is in general more people stand. I think most people wanna sit. So the bus rapid transit, the bus system, the bus, modern buses, and by the way, they, these vehicles look the same. You're asking what's the difference? I mean, you, you, I have shown people pictures of a bus rapid transit bus, and they say, see, isn't that a great streetcar? And I say, that's a bus. So they look very much the same. And it's just logical, if you've got a vehicle that is about the same size, looks the same, it's gonna carry the same number of people. But if more of them stand, you'll get more of them in there. And then there's the on and off boarding. The stops that we're building are actually better suited for buses, because the buses will be really level with these stops. The streetcars are a little higher, and they're gonna have to have ramps that will come down. Um, I also think that what we want is frequency. I mean, when you're waiting, do you wanna wait? And remember, this is gonna be a mix of buses and streetcars, and although Wamana may have told Mrs. Hyans that you can't add any more buses on here, I believe our plan is to add ten more buses and ten streetcars. That's the plan, twenty more vehicles. Um, so where I think we're planning to, to add those. But they can come along just as frequently, um, you, you, you can't have the streetcar coming in more frequently than the three buses that are in front of it. All right? And you're not gonna move any faster than the three buses that are in front of it. And if there's a fender bender on the road, you're sitting there, or you're probably getting off and getting on one of the buses that can pull around. So what we want, I, I, the, the question is a good one, I believe we all want the same thing, a comfortable, efficient, effective ride. And my point is that can be achieved for twenty percent of the cost, that's, that's sort of where I'm heading. That's sort of where I'm heading.
Okay, I finally get to answer, ask my question. I've waited a long time. I'm Bonnie Mangan and I live in Penrose and I've lived there since 1984 and own a home and pay lots of taxes. Your cheery little film and a lot of your handouts and reports highlight the Portland system. According to an annual census done by the Portland Business Alliance, the percentage of downtown Portland commuters who come in by streetcar was 1% in 2001. It was 1% in 2010. So you all are saying that we're gonna get more ridership. Some of the studies, even from Portland, do not bear this out. How do you explain that?
I'm not familiar with that particular study, but I do know that the Portland ridership has grown over the years and it grows particularly as the system expands. They're expanding it still. They're building a new line on the other side of the river and they're linking that line to the original line. 1% isn't necessarily a constant. The streetcar originally opened in Portland in what was known as the Pearl District, which was an old brownfield. Most of the development around the streetcar system is new. 1% in year one can be very different than 1% in year 10 when you've had a lot of growth. Because as the base grows, the real number grows. So I'd like to know what the real numbers are because my understanding is their system has in fact seen increases in ridership. They're now carrying, as I understand it, 14,000 passengers a day on their system.
We're not getting a lot of information about Portland. I guess I won't go into it, but there are articles in the Portland Oregonian showing that ridership is down. People are frustrated with it. The operating revenue is eating into their local budget and eating into other things, which is my concern from here. But you'll need to go online and check that out.
Dennis?
We do track ridership.
Need to pull the mic a little closer.
We do track ridership at these other systems. And one of the things we particularly saw in Portland is that it is not just the commute trip. Where the trains are full is midday and off-peak and weekend service. And so it's also about creating a transit-oriented lifestyle where people consider transit as an option for not only the commute trip, but for the trip to Twisted Vines Wine Store or the local taqueria. Those are trips today, in many cases on Columbia Pike, that are taken by car. And those are trips, if we can peel those off to trips that are comfortable, walking and transit trips, it could make a huge difference for the Columbia Pike community. And I need to be very clear, from a staff perspective, we support bus and rail. We have a robust rail and bus, rail and bus program. I use both all week. And so this is not an either/or, it's both. So I just think we need to keep that in mind.
I wanna add something to that. I wanna, I wanna add something.
Chris?
Particularly with regard to Portland. Imagine that if you were in another city in the country somewhere right now and they were considering implementing a subway system. And people said, you know, back in Washington DC, they did this metro rail system and it's been tremendous. It's moving all kinds of people, lots of people are using transit and they've had development all around transit. In this place in Arlington, they've had so much development around transit, 10% of their land has 90% of the development and pays half their taxes. And somebody there went and went to the internet and looked up, you know, Googled metro problems. How many sites do you think they'd find that said how terrible metro is here? But does anybody believe that we in Arlington would be better off if we had not done metro 40 years ago? So if you go to Portland, if you go to Portland and I suggest it's a place you might wanna go to because it is actually a pretty nice place.
I'm told I can't rebut.
And if you go to Portland and actually talk to people and get a full assessment, you will find there are people that, you know, hate their city government there too. And there are people not happy with various things. But I think you will find that the vast majority of the evidence and what most people tell you is what they've done has been really successful. Their light rail opened in 1990 and their streetcar opened in 2001 are doing really, really well. Now, you still might have lots of reasons you don't want one here and that's okay. But trying to argue that Portland isn't successful is a little bit silly. Let me finally say that while, while there may be buses that look a lot like modern streetcars, and there are some nicer-looking buses finally coming along, as a bus rider, I appreciate that, they do not ride the same. And that is a difference you don't get unless you actually ride buses and streetcars. Buses can be made better and a lot of us have done a lot of work to try and get them better and better, but there is a quality of ride with streetcar or any form of light rail that can't be equaled with rubber tires. And it makes a difference for many people such that, in fact, more people ride when there's a rail line. That's not an opinion, that is the reality of the experience in this country and everywhere else. New streetcar lines draw more riders than new bus lines. Again, there may be lots of reasons why you don't wanna do it and it does cost more to invest upfront, but it is a fact that more people will ride with a rail line than will ride on a bus.
Okay. We've only got about a half an hour left. I wanna get, there's a lot of hands, so yes, in the back.
I ride the bus up and down Columbia Pike every day or nearly every day. And I really appreciate hearing more about off-peak service and evening service because I've waited over an hour for a bus. I really have to wonder too about the comment about the buses being scheduled at their capacity because on Monday afternoon, I walked to the bus stop at South Greenbrier in Columbia Pike at 4:40 and waited 12 minutes for a bus of any stripe. And that's serviced by the 41, the 75, I'm sorry, not the 75, the 41, there's another one I've forgotten, and a 16. And 16G, but there's a third bus line that comes through there. Thank you, 45. 12 minutes at rush hour on Monday afternoon. So I don't know how this person is saying that they're scheduled at capacity. Another thing that I've noticed is that they are scheduled very inefficiently because I've had to be, I've tried to ride the buses in the mornings and I've been out at 6:20 in the morning and I've seen three 16Gs come by in 10 minutes' time. So I really have to question that. Somebody, I don't know what's going on. If it's in the morning, it can't be delayed by an accident or something. So, and you know, I'm not aware of any water main breaks that happen on a regular basis. I have to wonder why we can't have better software that can schedule the buses better, that can adapt somehow, surely with all the technology that we have. There could be some investment in technology that could, that could work this out a little better as far as when the buses come and could reroute them or something if we have three buses coming back-to-back like that at an off-peak time. And another thing is I'm kind of wondering about the streetcars. When there is an accident, as you mentioned, what are we gonna do? We have to get off? I mean, we sit there and wait till the car is pulled out of the way because the streetcar can't pull around, as you just brought up? That's, and I would not ride a streetcar if I know that I'm just gonna have to get off whenever there's an accident. And it makes no difference to me, you can talk about the wheels, but it makes no difference to me whether it has rubber or metal or electricity or whatever. What I'm concerned about is, am I gonna have to wait an hour to get somewhere? The third thing I'm concerned about is, I would love to ride the bus to Shirlington from my house on the weekends. There are no buses. There are no buses that go from Columbia Pike or Carlin Springs or, you know, that area.
So I'm hearing two questions, one about bus scheduling and the other about if it breaks down.
I'm just saying that in off-peak times, the service is not very good and that the streetcar will only take a certain amount of this traffic and that if we invested in more buses and sent them to better places and had more routes, that it would be better.
Let me answer the last question. Because there are actually two buses that connect Columbia Pike to Shirlington, the 75, which goes out here right up front and goes across Columbia Pike, and the 77. The ART 77 and the 75 both go to Shirlington and connect with Columbia Pike.
So just quickly about bus scheduling, but more about maybe the breakdown issue.
I can talk first about our local service.
You gotta pull that closer.
Talk a little bit about the local service. You're talking about the 41 and the 45. Every ART bus is tracked by GPS and you can pull up real-time information. We have real-time bus monitoring in our office and at the dispatch center. And we get ticked if it is running hot, which means it's running too fast or it's running behind. I use ART many times a week and find it to be, I mostly take the 41 and the 77 and find it to be generally reliable and on schedule. And I'm very familiar with the schedules. On Metro Bus, we are relying on Metro Bus dispatch out of the four-mile-run facility. They do have a lot of bus service. It can be subject to bunching. That's an issue that our metro rail, Metro Bus coordinator works with the bus operations because we're paying for that service. We have less control than we do our ART service. On ART, we can make fairly quick interventions if we get word that something is awry. The Metro Bus operation, it's just a larger operation. Some of the 16 buses are coming in from Fairfax County. Buses that start generally in Arlington run on time. The buses that are coming in from further out can have scheduling problems. And maybe Ms. Hines would also like to address that.
Well, I think that's a very fair statement, Dennis. Metro is in the process of making sure that all of its buses too have GPSs on them and that the tracking is working properly. I will go back and take this story, but I have watched those buses out there in the morning and I know how close they can come together. Don't know where the cusp is on the afternoon, but I will take that back to Metro and we'll get more information.
And then there was a question about breakdown of...
As with most of these systems, whether it's a bus rapid transit in dedicated lanes or a streetcar system that are fixed guideways, when you have a fixed guideway system, you have to have an emergency response system. And that emergency response system clears that vehicle from the travel lane as quickly as possible. I'm gonna tell one story. A friend of mine who used to be the executive director of the Massachusetts Bay Transit Authority, he was responsible for one of the early bus rapid transit systems that ran in a dedicated lane during the peak period. His favorite photograph was a police vehicle in front of a Dunkin' Donuts parked in the dedicated transit lane. Enforcement is an issue regardless the system you build. You have to have an enforcement system and an emergency response system that is operating 24/7 to move that vehicle. Another related question, what happens when the transit streetcar vehicle breaks down? Generally, they don't break down very often. And when they do, they do have onboard power systems that allow them to at least clear intersections, albeit at relatively slow speeds. And when the next vehicle comes along, the broken-down streetcar after it has been vacated by the passengers would be pushed to the nearest relief point. And that is the way those vehicles are moved along the line. They can be coupled together. That's one of the advantages of a streetcar system. Like most other train systems, they can be coupled and they can operate in tandem in multiple train consists. So there's, there are a number of different ways you address these issues in operations, particularly to your question, with emergency relief and then coupling them. I understood what you said, but I was providing you with, when there is an accident, the emergency response team will be responsible for removing the vehicles from that traveling.
I would like to just address your issue. There is things about signal prioritization and preventing bunching. There are really very advanced electronic systems to help this for buses and it would work for streetcars too, but particularly for buses. And part of my point is that if we don't spend as much on a streetcar, but we actually get an advanced bus system, there's a lot much more to make sure we have all of those things and make it really run well. So you could get, I think we get more for the money.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Juliette Hizney. I live in Arlington Heights neighborhood on Columbia Pike and I have been a resident there for 13 years. I do ride the bus on Columbia Pike on occasion, actually, although not most of the time because I have an at-home business, so I don't really need to commute. I have a question about studies that have been done that compare conversion of systems that are existing BRT systems into streetcar lines because I understand that you can really track the increase in ridership from those types of studies and I was hoping that the staff could comment on that.
It is, it is a progression and I will give you one example that's happening now, which in Ottawa, which is one of the premier BRT systems, it's the Canadian capital, they have a core BRT line, but they came to the point when it could not carry more buses. And so they are in the process of going through that conversion to where they had dedicated lanes, they had transit stations, and they are now putting in track. I will also mention another Canadian city, Toronto, has decided to completely rebuild and rehabilitate and expand their central city streetcar network. And they just took delivery, I mean, there was an intense debate about can buses do the same thing, but ultimately as Canada's largest city, they made a multi-billion-dollar commitment to rail to provide the carrying capacity they need between their urban neighborhoods.
In the modeling that we do in measuring these systems, there's a part of it, I'm gonna get a little technical, it's called the mode-specific effect. And it is the assumption that you put into a model about ridership preference. And in the Federal Transit Administration's modeling practice, there is a recognition that fixed guideway systems and rail systems attract more riders. And that's documented, there are lots of studies that document it. And in our particular case, we argued with FTA over the mode-specific effect. A number of years ago, Arlington County did a couple of different household travel surveys. This is usually done in conjunction with the council of governments. We asked very specific questions about bus usage by people who live along Columbia Pike. And what it showed is that a substantial number of people who live along Columbia Pike never ride the bus. 60% never ride the bus. And when we asked the question, again, in the same survey, if you would likely ride a streetcar if it were built, 60% said they would. It's a delta of about 20 percentage points that suggests that there are people who live along Columbia Pike who don't now ride the bus, but would likely ride a streetcar if it were built. And that's survey data that is in a statistically valid survey that we've done in a number of different surveys of Columbia Pike.
Mr. Sarno, could I comment on that? Could I, could I comment on that, please? Thank you. Surveys are very tricky things. And there was a survey on the Pike, the same survey actually that asked businesses and 60%, a lot of them said they were, they'd be happy to do a streetcar and more said actually they were happy with their buses. And then think about it, if somebody asks you, do you wanna ride a beautiful spiffy streetcar, it's a neat thing, or do you wanna ride a bus? We don't, you need to put out, as I say, the modern buses, this was not presented. If you look at the pictures, I can't believe somebody wouldn't ride something like that. And there are examples around the world where it's happening. And for the statistics that are cited, it's really whose facts are which. There are studies that show that growth has happened better than with BRT or just as well as BRT with streetcar. There are studies that have shown the streetcar's done better. There are good BRT systems, there are bad There are studies that have shown the streetcar's done better. There are good BRT systems, there are bad BRT systems, good streetcar. The question is, we need to do a really good analysis here, a fair comparison, and is it worth, you know, the extra expense?
Okay. Yes, in the back. I know there are lots of hands. I'm going to ask that we move the microphones forward as we go as well. Go ahead.
Good evening. Stuart Schwartz. I'm the Director of the Coalition for Smarter Growth. And we're proud to call Arlington a model, both for the other jurisdictions in this region and in the nation. Can you explain in more detail the critical, I guess, interconnectivity between the streetcar, the development incentives you need to revitalize the Pike, and getting the commitments for the affordable housing? Because I think that's what caused us to support the streetcar after looking at all the information, is that all those pieces have to work together. And can you further explain that?
Let me just take a quick initial crack, as short as I can. You know, and just to the last comment, I know we hear a lot, there are a lot of ways to say there are a lot of studies and there are a lot of people that don't believe in climate change too. I know that because there are scientists that say any number of things. But we do rely at some level on our professional staff. And our professional staff do that research. And I've never seen a group more committed to this project than anything else they do. My experience, being on the board a while, is that our smart growth, that interconnected link between land use and transportation is fundamental to who we are and how we've in fact reduced traffic on some of our, many of our arterial roads in the last 15 and 20 years while increasing significant amount of density. That decision that the neighbors and the people that got involved in that process over the last 10 years along Columbia Pike came together, "What are we going to do with the density? We don't want the RB corridor." You know, of course, there is a bump out under the Pentagon for a Metro Rail line. It was part of the original plan as a potential expansion of Metro down Columbia Pike. That was on the table. Not enough money. We don't want the density that would be needed to, you know, we don't want that much density to support that investment. What do you want? We want something more of a main street, a little higher than what it is, but a main street. What is the best transit option? We had to come up with the transit option that supported the amount of density that went with that vision for Columbia Pike. And everything you're hearing from the staff and from us is that that led us to the streetcar. And that's the capacity question. If we were to backtrack and say, seven years later, we don't want that, we would have to change the land use plan. There's a commitment of the people that work here to in fact link land use and transportation. And never to be afraid of density if it's done right and put in the right place and it creates the right place that you want. But never to permit that density if you don't have it supported by the appropriate transit system to do that. And by the way, I was in, I had a conversation in Montgomery with a member of the Montgomery Council right now. They've been going through the exact same debate we are here in Arlington. The Purple Line has been planned for years. There are lots of people that have been arguing for the last years to turn that into a bus rapid transit, not to do the rail. They have held steady. Now there is funding coming through from the state. That's a $2.5 billion project. But understandably, there is always the argument, should we do that Purple Line? Or should we do bus rapid transit? It was a discussion when Metro was going in, and it's a discussion on each of these lines.
Thank you. In Montgomery County, they also were, they were looking at much more rail and they're doing bus rapid transit. I spent a fair amount of time, two meetings with Mark Eldrich, who's on the county council there, and spent five years getting them to change from doing streetcar to BRT. He's a bit of a model for me. Well, actually, he's talking about wanting to go all the way through into the Pentagon and connect with a BRT system. I hope we will do. I do believe in climate change, and in part because I believe in facts and looking at facts. I believe that the staff is committed to this project because the board has given them direction. The staff is committed, and that's where we are. But we've been designing a transit system, and where we are right now is to decide what kind of vehicle to use. In Crystal City, it's planned to be a streetcar, but they're starting with BRT. So you've got a transitway all going. You can start with BRT. All the work we've done to decide where the stops are, everything will work for BRT. So it's not like that work is wasted. Where we are now is deciding what vehicle to use. This is absolutely a discussion we need to be having now. I thank all of you for coming. I know there's supporters on both sides. And I really appreciate, I hope I've planted some seeds of doubts in the minds of some of you because there are facts on both sides, and actually, I think more facts for BRT. But we haven't been able to see them, and I don't blame staff at all. They're following direction. But this is the time to make decisions. Do we buy 10 streetcars at $4 million apiece? Put down tracks at $30 million a mile that will only go five miles? Or do we simply add a few more buses, make them really good? Get those technology systems and have a dynamite system that will connect with the BRT system in Alexandria? The BRT system they are thinking of doing in Fairfax going down Route 1 to Fort Belvoir? The BRT system that they are doing in Montgomery County with the dedicated bus lanes that are going through the district to here? We could have a regional bus system and we could have it pretty quickly at less cost.
Folks, we have very little time left. I really want to make sure. There's a lot of folks with their hands up.
Folks. Okay. We already have a regional bus system. It's called Wamata. It already serves people all across this region. And we will see over the next years absolute increases in bus use everywhere in the community. Where people can achieve dedicated lanes and get that incredible advantage of time, bus rapid transit makes a tremendous amount of sense. But that's not the circumstance that we have in either Columbia Pike or Crystal City. The dedicated transitway stops at Potomac Yards, basically, and moves into the Crystal City grid. And so you'll be able to bypass a little bit on Route 1. That's Alexandria's big get. But once you're into Crystal City, it's those, that BRT is going to run in mixed use, in a mixed-use lane, just as it does on Columbia Pike. So the question for Arlington is not what vehicle to choose. In fact, we've chosen, the board has voted, the FTA is evaluating our request at this very moment. We went in with streetcar, as did Fairfax. So that there is no question and there is no vote that the board needs to take. We are waiting. I want to go back to Stuart's question.
Hold on, folks. Hold on, please. Please.
Folks.
Okay.
We need, I would like to go back to Stuart's question because actually, I think the reason the Coalition for Smarter Growth supported our plan is because we do do something different. Which is, we do connect the continued provision of affordable housing to this density and to the streetcar in a way that hasn't been done before. And let me say, I live on the RB corridor. I live a block from one of the metro stations. And nobody thought about affordable housing back then. You know, a lot of affordable housing went away in order to make room for what, as others have said, you know, this incredible density. What we're trying to do here on the Pike is hold on to our sense of ourselves and to create a better place for the varied people at all ages and stages and from all backgrounds to continue living on the Pike with great transit to support the variety of housing and the variety of businesses. That's our goal here. And as I think Jay said, and as we've said all night, as we look out, as our professional staff looks out, not because we told them what the answer was, but because they've researched the answer. As we look out over these next 20 or 30 years, we have reached the conclusion that the density on Columbia Pike and the density in Crystal City simply cannot be supported with buses alone. And we need to add this additional layer of higher-capacity vehicles to help make sure that we don't turn back into the biggest traffic jam in the region.
Doug, before you turn it over to another questioner, let me just add this real quick for everybody. Because there's a lot of comparisons that are used with BRT. And it needs to be very clear that there will be no dedicated lane for anything in Columbia Pike. If we were to do a BRT with the rapid, a dedicated lane, there will be a violation of our agreement with the state. That just simply will not happen. There will be no dedicated lane for the streetcar either. Buses, cars will be able to travel also on that line. So it's important that we have that clarification. Because I know that folks sometimes mention that these will be dedicated only for the streetcar. And again, to do so will be a violation of our agreement with the Virginia Department of Transportation. Let's go to the next question.
Yes, in the back.
Hello, how are you? My name's Adriana Torres. I own a business on Columbia Pike called Cafe Sazon. And I also have, I also have a background in architecture. And I felt like I needed to say something because I'm actually surprised more of you are not supporting the streetcar. For many reasons. If you could please listen to me, I would really appreciate it. I have been on Columbia Pike for about two years, and I have seen businesses fail left and right. And it's not because we have a streetcar. It's because we don't have the customers that can potentially come to our businesses. Now, someone made a comment, and the reason I mentioned, I have an architecture degree, that you can't have affordable housing and a streetcar at the same time. That's false. Because you could have regulations that make private landowners have affordable housing, a higher percentage of affordable housing for every land they purchase and they develop. So you might not have projects that are completely affordable housing, but you will increase the inventory of affordable housing. So I would please ask you to just educate yourselves a little bit more in that it is something we do need. I don't see businesses staying on Columbia Pike if something doesn't improve.
Thank you.
I'd like to, Doug, can I give a response?
Go ahead.
I think that, I didn't mean an important point, which is the connection between affordable housing and this project, which is the previous questioner also was inquiring about. And I think it's really important to understand what the chairman said in the beginning about the unique approach that we've taken here that makes the streetcar a tool for preservation. We know that if, you know, we don't have to do this, so, you know, we could decide we're not doing any of this stuff. If we didn't, what would happen? Well, affordable housing is already threatened. In fact, we have already been losing it over the last 10 years. Because even without redevelopment, the overall pressure on land values in our region, for a lot of understandable reasons, more people want to be in closer demographics, oil prices over time going up, everything is pushing prices of land up and that pushes rent up. In the absence of redevelopment opportunities, what a lot of landowners do then is, in some cases, sell off to what's called a real estate investment trust or themselves. Basically, kick everybody out, upgrade the place, put in some marble countertops, reopen it with rents a lot higher. We've seen that happen quite a few times. And we could lose all the affordable housing without any redevelopment at all, simply through that process. So it's not as though we're not going, you know, we're going to be able to keep all this affordable housing if we did nothing. At the same time, and this, one of the very first questioners was asking about why do we didn't, I thought he was asking why we didn't control rents, which we don't have the power to do in Virginia. So rent control is not an option. Whether you think it's good or bad, it's just that's what the law is. So in order to create affordable housing, we have to provide various kinds of incentives to do it, which Arlington has done quite successfully. We have about 6,000 units of committed affordable housing. That's about something like 14% or so of the rental stock of the county. But in order to meet the goals that we have set, we have to preserve thousands of units on Columbia Pike. The plan we adopted, and we actually adopted the housing plan before we approved the streetcar. The plan we've adopted provides that if you want to take advantage of the opportunity to build one of these new higher-density, smaller than Ballston or Clarendon, but still higher-density, of projects on what might be a parking lot on Columbia Pike now, there's certain things you have to do. And part of it includes affordable housing included as part of the project. Now, in order to get that, somebody has to want to build that project. And the difference between doing that and not doing that is a question of the return on investment. And that's where the incentive that is provided by the streetcar creating that value gives us a lever to do something about our housing problem. And we have essentially set up a set of different tools by which we'll try to meet this very big goal. And a fairly big chunk of it is to be done by the newer development. So that it's not only upscale housing we'll get, but also affordable housing. But we can only get that if they choose to use the new plan. And that again is optional, and that's one of the reasons why the streetcar makes a big difference. I've heard a number of times tonight people talk about cost-benefit analysis, and I thought we should be clear. Mr. Del Judas told you, you can find the alternatives analysis and all that online. You can also find the return on investment study. This is the cost-benefit analysis, which in fact was done. And you can also get that online if you want to see it for yourself.
Doug, before we ask the next question, it's about 8:55 now. So I wanted to time-check in so we make sure we started on time and went in close to on time.
That's right.
I have to make one quick statement if I might, because I'm the only one here.
Very quick, if we could.
Same goal, affordable housing, absolutely. Bus rapid transit will do it for a whole lot less. That's my point. Same thing. Do it for less.
So the two people holding microphones, unfortunately, you are the last two questions. So we'll start with this gentleman here.
Hi, I'm Stu Whitaker, and I appreciate the staff and the board being out here tonight. And I have looked through the documentation fairly extensively. It's thorough and I appreciate the excellent work that's been done. When I look at the forecast for increase in population and increase of employment, the forecast, and I guess this comes from COG, is that the increase is going to be 21%, 23% from the period 2010 to 2030. When I look at the figures for the projection of the increase in riders from 16,000 up to 30,000, that's about a 90% increase. It seems to me that those two figures don't correspond. So I don't understand when you have a 20%, 22% increase in population and employment, how you come up with the forecast for a 90% increase in ridership.
I will take that, and this really goes to Arlington's...
Put the microphone a little closer, Mike.
This goes to Arlington's very highly coordinated transportation and development approach, which is development in Arlington is highly targeted. And the community development housing staff goes to great lengths to forecast units that match very closely with county board approvals. So they look at it on a block-by-block level. The COG forecast that you're probably looking at do not reflect the latest work of the staff, which is what we call round 8.2. But most of the growth in Arlington, it's over 90% of all growth between now and 2040, is Roslyn-Bolston, Columbia Pike, and Jefferson-Davis corridor principally Pentagon City and Crystal City, and very little anywhere else. So that is the reason, that's what drives the need to make these transportation investments. It's intense ridership increases, but in relatively small portions of the county.
But to put it very simply, the answer to the question is, the intention is that the new population is going to be much more transit-using than the current situation. We're actually trying to raise the transit ridership. And we recognize that the only way to accommodate the kind of growth we have and still have the quality of life we have and we want and, you know, have our roads continue to function, is that most of that growth has to be transit-using. Now, those are ambitious numbers, but we also know we're actually quite successful at doing it. And in the metro corridors, Dennis has generated an awful lot of data on this that you may have seen a news story earlier this week about how, you know, Arlington is avoiding, I thought it says Arlington voids DC traffic woes or something like that because of the tremendous amount of growth we've had with comparatively little change in traffic in key intersections all throughout that corridor. And that's the point. We have to have more people using transit. So if we're going to have whatever amount of growth we're going to have, we need that to be disproportionately dependent on transit. That means people have to have a really good system. They have to want to use it. They have to use it in high numbers. And Columbia Pike is probably the place in Arlington where although we have the highest bus ridership in the Commonwealth, we really have far lower transit usership than is potential. The density of, right where we are here, in the neighborhoods around where this school is, the density is some of the highest in the county. It's higher than a lot of places in the metro corridor. We do have fairly high bus ridership relative to bus ridership. But it's not as high transit usage by a long shot as you find in the metro corridor. It's not even as high as in Sherrlington. We can make a lot more transit users if we give them better service.
Very quickly, last question.
Sure. My name's Matthew West, and I pay taxes here in Arlington County, much like most of the people in the room. At the moment, you guys are pulling nurses and taking public health funding away because the county can't afford to pay for them. So if we can't afford to put nurses in schools and the budget is taking them out, how is it that we can afford to do this? And then also, you threw a softball or a... And then, also, you threw a softball or a slow pitch. You said that the ride on a rail is much smoother or much better than it is on a bus with rubber tires. I'd love to drive a Porsche, but I'd drive a Fiat because I can't afford a Porsche.
Jay. Yeah, let me just tackle the first part of the question again, and I tried to do this a little earlier, because that is a very important issue, and it's an important understanding people have, the way budgets work. And some people know our budgets and know how to, you know, how their own budgets work, and some don't know as well. This is our operating budget that you read about, where the manager was given guidance to close a gap with half of that gap in the operating budget being permitted to be revenue increase, the tax rate increase she's proposed, and half having to come from cuts. She's put forward 46 FTEs cutting. Some of that's public safety, some of that's human services and the other things. But the money that is going into this Columbia Pike streetcar, as I described earlier, is from our partner agencies, federal government, state government, Fairfax. And the Arlington contribution is solely from the Transportation Capital Fund. It has nothing to do with those operating expenses and the 46 FTEs. We cannot move the money from one pot to the other. The state authorized us to allow a surcharge on commercial real estate. It goes into that pot, you can't use it for those other issues. The Transportation Capital Fund is the specific funding source for which Arlington would pay its contribution to the $250 million. It cannot be used for those operating expenses.
I'm going to close us here, to respect everybody's time. I know a number of you did not get your questions asked. Please fill out a comment form, we will make sure we get to all the questions and comments online, and I really want to thank all of you for your stability and your participation tonight.
Doug, yeah, Doug, before we close the evening, if I may, on behalf of the board, on behalf of the staff, we want to thank you very much for coming tonight. As we move forward with the streetcar system, as we...
Hey, 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 hold on, hold on, everybody, everybody.
We were hoping to have a civil discussion, it's already past the time. As we move forward with the discussion for the streetcar, one thing to know, in that there are places where the streetcar has been...
Please, please. Everyone's gotten a chance to talk.
Yeah, well, you know, we asked, we said from 7:00 PM to 9:00 PM, you have more information online, we have a lot of handouts. We thank you very much for coming tonight, have a good evening, we appreciate all your questions, thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry you didn't get the mic.